Testing, testing. Testing.
Good evening. I am calling to order the school board meeting on September 17th, 2019. Time is six o'clock. And I have a young man up here that's going to help us with the pledge of are there any changes or dissension with the agenda? Hearing none, then I'm going to move that the agenda is approved. And now we will start with our opening statement. And the board would like to take this moment to recognize and feel honored that we are residing on traditional Denina land. We want to welcome you to our meeting and thank you for attending and supporting the work of the Anchorage School District and the board. The mission of the Anchorage School District is educating all students in life. And now I'd like to turn the mic over to our student representative for her opening statement.
On behalf of the school board, we would like to thank students, parents, teachers, staff, school business partners, and the entire community for your investment in our district with your time, your talent, and your tax dollars. If you're unable to be physically present for the entire meeting, you may choose to tune in to the municipality of Anchorage's, or, nope, the Anchorage School District YouTube channel to watch the live stream. Recordings are also available through the agenda in Board Docs. My name is Emily Hickox and I am the student representative to this board. I was elected to serve through the Anchorage School District Student Advisory Board. I offer a student voice for this body with an advisory vote on our action items.
Thank you. And now for the best part of all of our board meeting, and that is our focus on staff, students, and community, what makes ASD great.
Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Deana Bishop and I have the pleasure of serving as the district superintendent. Thank you for being with us here tonight to celebrate our staff and students. It is a collective effort of the board, but a very deliberate effort that during board meetings, we celebrate the people, students, employees, staff, community members, anyone that truly achieves and makes ASD great. And so today, we are celebrating the 2019 Alaska History Teacher of the Year. Please come forward, Jennifer Claymire from Bartlett. Here she is. I'm going to share a few words about Jennifer. And then we have Michelle Dammel here, and she will then present the award. But we also have the principal in the room with the principal, Sean Prince. Please come forward as well to celebrate. All right. And Jennifer is a teacher at Bartlett High School, and she has been named the 2019 Alaska History Teacher of the Year, an award presented annually by the Gildner Learman Institute of American History, the nation's leading organization dedicated to K-12 American history education. Inaugurated in 2004, the History Teacher of the Year Award highlights the crucial importance of history education by honoring exceptional American history teachers from elementary school through high school. And in Alaska, Bartlett High ASD has the top honoree for our state. Yes. With that, Michelle Dammel, the State Coordinator for the National History of the Year, is here to present an award.
Thank you. I'm very honored to be here to present, well, I'm going to give her a certificate. She, not the good stuff, she already got the good stuff. She got, received a $1,000 award. Oh, there you go. Yeah, so that's the certificate. So she got, she received a $1,000 cash prize, an all-expense-paid trip to a Gildner Learman history seminar of her choice next summer, which is usually held on the East Coast, an archive of books and other resources that were given in her honor to use at Bartlett High School's library and resource center. We are awarding her this for her tireless dedication to students and teaching social studies and government classes at Bartlett High School. We congratulate Ms. Claymire for being a wonderful representative from the Anchorage School District and also the state of Alaska. So give her a big hand, please.
All right, and one thing that we surprise our guests with is the mic. And so Ms. Claymire, what would you like to say about this award or your students? I know you have a new grandbaby here. You know, you could share anything you'd like. Share something good with us.
I have a beautiful grandbaby in the back. Her name is Lily, and she's hanging out back there, and thank you.
What's the best thing that you like about teaching American history?
The best thing is when students come back and say, because of your class, I'm an informed citizen and I participated.
Thank you. And Mr. Prince?
This was my mentor teacher when I first started teaching. So it's, it's coming full circle.
Thank you. And with that, we're going to step over here for a picture, if that's okay?
For the baby book, or do you like it? Congratulations, Spahnholz. Thanks. Thank you so much.
And now, would Ariana Spahnholz please come forward? And Ariana is here, as well as her teacher Vanessa Forbes. Please come forward, I saw Vanessa here. And Principal Kern, Dr. McInley, come forward. And we're going to just share our next person who makes ASD great. So we have some very exciting news from the Career and Technical Education Department. Ariana Spahnholz, 2018-19 Veterinary Assisting Student, became an approved veterinary assistant. She is the first student to pass the National Association of Veterinary Technicians in America, or the NAVTA, I got that one right, Veterinary Assistant Program. This means she can actually go to work for real and get paid for her work, and she's not even graduated from high school. This comes just months after King Tech High School became the only approved veterinary assisting program in the state of Alaska, and only one of 20 around the nation in all 50 states. Eligibility to sit for this exam requires that students complete veterinary assisting, advanced veterinary assisting, animal anatomy and physiology, and clinical practices in veterinary science, which has over 100 hours of clinicals. Ariana did this all in just one year. Not only that, she attended HOSA, which is the Health Occupations Students of America International Leadership Conference this summer, and is now serving as the HOSA Chapter President at King Tech High School. Vanessa Forbes, the veterinary assistant instructor, has done an incredible job building this program over the last three years. It is a new program, so to have such an awardee and a student who passed the exam while sitting in high school is tremendous. It's nearly unheard of, they told us, so congratulations. And finally, thank you, thank you for your passion and hard work, and you make ASD great. And with that, I've got to say, and I actually get to visit sometimes, once a week, they actually take in real dogs to learn their trade, and I have some dogs that I sometimes take there, so awesome job. And I, and I walk in, it's the best thing, because I think there's about four people to one dog, and your dogs come home exhausted from whatever they do. So if you can tell us about your program, the best parts of it, and then we're, also Ariana can think about what she wants to share.
Okay, hi, everyone. So we have an NAVTA approved veterinary assisting program, and being the first in the state is absolutely amazing. We have, the state has been trying to get an AVMA-approved veterinary technology program up here, and we haven't been able to do that quite yet. So this is just another step in the right direction for our field in Alaska and elevating what our students and professionals are going to be able to do within the field. So Ariana just happens to be the first one from our program, which is amazing. And I think most were kind of scared to do it, because we have a lot more coming forward now, so we've actually had two more take it and pass. So that's awesome. So it's an amazing program, and I guess the best thing about my program is students like this that are working in the field.
I just wanted to say thank you to King Tech High School, because I really couldn't have done it. When I moved back into Alaska from Texas, I didn't know what I wanted to do. I wanted to do something in the vet field, but I knew I was in high school, and I saw what they offered, and I couldn't believe what they had offered. So to see the whole program, I was told don't take it in two years, but I was too excited and wanted to take the whole, the whole thing all at once. And I really couldn't have done it without the motivation from everybody at the school and my counselors and my family. So, thank you.
And I just want to say, you're an amazing young lady. And Ariana, Ariana exemplifies what we teach at King Tech High School. Find your passion, work hard, chase down your dream, and the magic happens. And it did here. And so you got, this is a successful young lady. She, we'll see, we'll hear a lot from her. And also to Ms. Forbes, she's 100% and more, dedicated every day to what she does, to the students, to the community, and the pets that she serves. So, thank you.
And I want to say that as a dog owner, a dog mom, that the day of the earthquake, I got a text, "All dogs are safe." I got a text about the safety of our dogs, right away, as a dog mom, so thank you. We're going to take a picture, and thank you so much, and thank you for making ASD great. All right. And, okay, and would this next awardee please come forward? Andy Ratliff. Come forward. Did you know about this? You didn't look very surprised. And his boss, Jim Anderson, our Chief Financial Officer. All right. So I would like to share that we are very pleased to announce that Andy Ratliff has recently achieved the highly coveted Certificate Administrator of School Finance and Operations, certification by the Association of School Business Officials International. The SFO certification is granted to highly qualified individuals who fulfill multiple requirements, including passing an exhaustive and comprehensive two-part national exam. SFO certification demonstrates a commitment to high standards and ethical practice in school business management. And please join me in congratulating Andy Ratliff on this significant career accomplishment. You make ASD great. And I would like to invite a man a few words to please share something about Andy.
I haven't actually read the award yet, but he did tell me I have to start calling him sir, now that he's received it. So we'll work through that. But Andy is amazing, everyone who knows him would agree. Amazing work ethic, great human being, father, husband, not to me. But, no, Andy's amazing. I couldn't pick, if I, if I could pick anyone I want to work with, I couldn't pick better than Andy.
Generally, when I get to speak to crowds about budget, it's fairly depressing, so I'm not really sure what to say, other than I express my disappointment at the balloons or the standard. And I've seen some with dollar signs on them, so I know they're out there. But anyway, thank you for this. It's, it's been a pleasure working here, and several more years to come. Fabulous budgeting.
So I just want to let, a lot of times we wonder about testing and how to test and test, and you can imagine, Ariana, where she is, where she is, because of an assessment, a third-party assessment. We celebrated this, and so we, even though we hate them, they're sometimes necessary to achieve an award, achieve greatness, and I just want to appreciate your willingness to do that, as well as Ariana, to put yourself out there. So thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our focus on staff and students. Thank you for making ASD, everybody with me, great.
Yeah, I like those. Okay, we're going to move into reports, and our first report is from our Student Advisory Board Representative.
All right, we had our first meeting last Tuesday at King Tech High School, and we talked about what we hope to get out of SAB this next year, and what we want to do going forward, as well as we handed out election packets and discussed the positions that are open. We currently don't have a student representative. We will be electing one in this next election that will take place at our next meeting. And so we haven't had anyone to send to the strategic planning meeting. I know that there was one last night, so sorry that we couldn't be there. Once we have the full eBoard, we'll have a discussion about if we want to send the student representative, or if we want to send someone else and have them work together on that, and I will let you know once we have someone to send. I'll be here in the meantime until we have our elections, which will be next meeting, October 8th, and again, at King Tech High School. I know Ms. Marsette came to our meeting last week. It was really great to have you and to hear your input on the student rep position and the, kind of give more of an insight onto, as to what that is. I think that one of our problems was that people didn't fully realize what this position entailed, and so it was nice to have you there to sort of explain that and to have our students see kind of the big picture. So, thanks.
Thank you. It's always my pleasure to be there. Moving on, Finance Committee.
Finance Committee met today. We had two topics on the agenda, the quarry and facilities discussion, as well as just getting ready to take a look at the FY21 budget timeline discussion. We look forward to our next meeting, October 15th, at 3:30 in Room 150.
Communications.
Yes, Madam Chair, we have not met since the 15th, I believe, but our next meeting is September 24th, from 3 to 4, here in our, in our boardroom.
Compliance? Oh, governance, still on the old bird.
And we've not met since our last meeting also, but we'll be meeting on the 24th.
Thank you. Are there any other committee or, yes, Ms. Hill?
I was just wondering, we have that strategic planning that all of us, but one member was able to attend, so I'm not sure how to get him caught up. Are we doing a, is that a committee? Are we doing an update every time we meet? I think it would be helpful for the community to hear what the, you know, what the progress is.
You just beat me to the punch.
Oh, okay, great.
Yes, we had our first steering committee. We invited individuals from the community to meet with the board and talk about the timeline that we have put together to begin the discussion of our goals for 2021, for the next five years, because as you all know, our, our goals for 90 by or 2020 is fastly approaching. We had a very good discussion, we'll be talking about targeting, not targeting, I don't like that word, about engaging different communities, different organizations, being able to go out there. We will have things set up in four locations at our schools to invite members. We'll be getting input from our teachers, from our students, from business members, from everyone in the community to help us when we start to put these goals together. Because as everybody knows, there's that proverb that it takes a village to raise a child, and that's exactly what we want to do here. We can't do it without our community members and our families and everyone else. So just a preliminary meeting to kind of get us started. We will have another meeting probably in about a week or two. It is open to the public, it'll be posted, and then we'll dive in a little more as to what are some of the questions we want to ask. What we're trying to focus on is what do we value in a student that graduates? Or as Ms., Dr. Bishop likes to say, commencement is actually the beginning. So that's what we're talking about. Thank you. All right, now on to public testimony. And just a reminder that public testimony and... The board welcomes comment on non-agenda and non-action items. We value public comment as it ensures that we remain aware of public thoughts, ideas, and concerns informs our decision-making process. There is a one-hour time slot beginning of the meeting. Testimony in excess of one hour will be heard at the end of the meeting, or can be submitted in writing. We have a table front and center with microphones available for your testimony when I call your name. You have three minutes to testify, and you may begin speaking when the timer appears to the screen to your left and begins the countdown. When you have 30 seconds left, the number will turn yellow, and when the timer reaches zero, please finish your sentence. In order to provide equity to all who would like to speak, the board asks that there be no clapping after testimony, as it may intimidate others who would like to testify with opposing opinions. Additionally, it's not our practice that board members answer questions or engage in discussions with public, members of the public. This is your time to speak and our time to listen. The board will consider all information shared by the public, and when deemed necessary, issues raised in testimony will be referred to the administration for follow-up. And the individuals that I have first are Ava Earl and Shannon Earl. And Ava, you can go first when you see the clock.
Where is it? Okay, sweet. All right, hello, my name is Ava Earl. I'm here on behalf of the South Anchorage High School Cross Country Running Team. I am a junior at South Anchorage High School, and I think that you guys are aware of our busing situation right now. As it came up at the last board meeting, a few of our runners came and spoke, and I'm here to further address the issue, and I want to make it clear that I know that you guys are doing the best that you can, but we want to keep letting you guys know what our issues are. So for me personally, I've seen a lot more shin splints on the team than we have ever had, and our trainer agrees with that at South Anchorage. She says that she's never had this many runners come in with injuries, and this is from, we're having to run on the pavement outside of South, because we don't have the adequate trails outside of the South Anchorage School Building that some other schools like Service High School do. And if we don't have the buses to get to trails, then we are not able to train on the type of area that we'll be racing on. So also, as a junior, this is the year that colleges are looking at applicants for scholarships and stuff. This is important to me, because I definitely want to go to running in college, and if we don't get the right kind of training, then it's, we're not going to perform as well, and colleges will see that we are not performing as well, and we will not be accepted as highly as other people from different schools or different states that have better busing and better training opportunities. From a team standpoint, we're really trying this year to work on continuity within the team and building a team community, and it's difficult when we don't have the right kind of training. I see a lot of the freshmen, we're trying to make it really fun for them, but if they're having injuries their first year running ever, and even some of the upperclassmen who have just started running, it can't be very encouraging to be running and getting injuries your very first year, and they're not going to continue with this sport. And obviously, all of us want people to be involved in these extracurricular activities. So, yeah. in these extracurricular activities. So, yeah. And also, this is hurting our chances at winning any titles, or even making it to state this year. Our girls' team has been not only practicing really hard, but we're, like I said, really trying to build a community, and we have a really strong girls' team of both upperclassmen and underclassmen, a lot of new freshmen this year that are on our potential state team. And we really want a chance to make it there, but it's really difficult without the proper training and the busing, so thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Shannon Earl. I'm here to represent the Booster Club Board for South Anchorage's cross-country running program, and the lack of buses, as my daughter Ava just said. This is an abridged version of a testimony that we'll provide to you in writing. We have about 150 runners at South with no nearby trails, and I think you should just focus on the number of 150 high school students signing up to voluntarily run long distances currently on pavement. So, trail running keeps our athletes fit for competition and is infinitely more enjoyable than running through neighborhoods. Most importantly, though, it prevents injury. Athletes at South are dealing with a large number of injuries, all of which are tied to and/or exacerbated by running on hard surfaces. ASD has provided two alternatives to teams like South. We're not alone. We either can change our practice times to 4:30 PM or later to receive busing, or we can fund the buses ourselves at a cost of $250 a drop. For South, that would mean $500 per practice. Neither alternative is reasonable. Charging, excuse me, changing practice times would result in approximately 60 students leaving the team. Asking parent booster clubs to pay for busing not only sets up inequity across the district, but it is outrageous to suggest giving our team's collective fees to ASD totaling around $28,000 for the purpose of this sport that we pay more. Following student testimony on this subject at the last school board meeting, our athletes were informed that the lack of busing is not due to a budget issue, but to a driver shortage. It is our understanding that the driver shortage is a perennial problem previously solved by a secondary busing company, Premier. The contractor is still available, and is in fact, the only one allowed by the district. Additionally, the rates to drive South teams to practice are in line with years past, so we're looking at the same driver shortage, the same secondary contractor solution, and the same fee for taking our kids to practice, as far as we know. The only variable that appears to have changed is who pays. So, how is this not a budget issue? The question has been asked by parents to the Board and the school district, and we have not yet received an answer. There are many complicated issues facing ASD, and this doesn't seem like one of them. Cross-country running teams in the district without ready-trail access should get training for their sport on trails, at least a couple times a week. We think that the district should apply the same funding to bus our kids to practice as they have in years past. By not doing so, you're making our team more injured and less competitive. Last week, you, Dr. Bishop, spoke eloquently and forcefully about equity in sports during a press, I'm out of time, can I finish my sentence? Thank you. On a press, about, okay, you spoke eloquently, unlike me, about equity in sports during a press conference on rulemaking and enforcement with regard to swimming. It was stated that given the large number of student athletes represented by ASD in Alaska School Activities Association, you were confident that the district's voice would be heard by that organization, and that's how we parents feel on the issue of trail access for the largest cross-country running team in the district. We hope that you'll hear us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could have, I need to put my glasses back on. Michelle Hensel?
Hello, my name is Michelle Hensel, and I'm a family medicine physician and a mother of two daughters in the Anchorage School District. I grew up in Anchorage, and I ran cross-country for Service High School. I was one of about 10 to 15 girls on the team at the time. Today, my daughter runs cross-country for South High, where there are approximately 145 kids on the team. 145 kids from one school, wow. One of the great things about cross-country running is that most people can do it with very little cost, a pair of good running shoes and an adequate trail. One could argue there is very little investment that goes into this sport as compared to other high school sports that require expensive equipment and space rental. Our many kids on the South High cross-country team need access to an adequately maintained cross-country trail. It is suboptimal to put our children on sidewalks, pavement, crossing busy streets as a substitute for cross-country running. This is not the sport of cross-country running, and it's dangerous. Our children need buses to get them to a cross-country trail on a frequent basis. One bus ride per week for six weeks is not enough, and the cost of such is likely much less than the athlete registration fee revenue, which totals close to $30,000. We can do better. Citing Healthy Alaskans 2020, 25 of the leading health priorities for our state include reducing the proportion of adolescent Alaskans who are overweight or obese, and increasing the proportion of adolescent Alaskans who are physically active. South High cross-country running aligns nicely with that goal. It is a no-cut sport, and they welcome all comers to participate in regular, healthy, physical exercise. Support our children in their efforts to run cross-country at South High School. Please budget and schedule buses so they can actually do cross-country running on cross-country trails. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to provide public testimony on non-action items? Yes. You could come forward and state your name and spell it, please.
Okay, my name is Chris Hellman. That's spelled C-H-R-I-S-H-E-L-L-M-A-N-N. Has the time started?
Yeah, you can begin.
Okay, I didn't see anything. Okay, so I'm also a parent of a child on the cross-country running program, and I wanted to sort of help illustrate this issue for you guys. I want you to imagine a basketball team practicing in a hallway because they can't get access to a gym, or a football team practicing in a parking lot because they can't get access to an athletic field. And so, I think there's a sense that cross-country running doesn't really need that kind of, you know, doesn't need a lot of infrastructure, but asking them to run on streets and sidewalks is a distinctly suboptimal solution, because cross-country running requires the ability to run uphills, downhills, flat ground, varied terrain, and the only way you can do that is by getting access to trails. And so, without the buses, they're limited to running through neighborhoods on streets and sidewalks, which, according to the school trainer, has resulted in more injuries than she has ever seen in her career before. So, I'd like you, as the Board, to think about this as a public health issue, because, you know, we can't have the kids, you know, getting injured at these higher rates, and, you know, unfortunately, it could be a legal liability issue. Now, I understand this is not a budget issue, but I, so I assume there must be some kind of a contractual thing where you've contracted with a primary busing company. So, I would ask you to investigate with your legal team that if the primary busing company cannot fulfill their contract, surely this would allow the school district to pursue whatever means it needs to, to provide the busing, to make up the difference between what the contracted busing company can provide and what is needed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to testify on non-action item? Yes, please go forward. And if you could state your name and spell it, please.
All right, hi, my name is Aiden Schubert. That's A-I-D-E-N-S-C-H-U-B-E-R-T. All right. Has my time started?
You can begin.
All right, so I don't have a full-on speech prepared, so please bear with me, but I know that as a runner for cross-country at South High, that we have sort of been swept under the rugs recently. We have not been provided buses, and our trails have been taken away from us. So, we've been forced to run on concrete, which I've noticed is quite dangerous. There's many cars going by, and we have to crossroads eventually. But, there's also the other standpoint that I have, which is the freshmen that are coming in are not being afforded the same opportunities that I was as a freshman. I'm currently a junior, and so I've had much more memories made, and some of my favorite memories were running from Kincaid Chalet to Tasty Freeze, but we are not afforded the buses to drive to Kincaid and then run to Tasty Freeze. And so, if we, when we do get our buses, we are focusing on getting to trails, because we need to be on trails for the short time that we are allowed, because otherwise, we will be running on concrete more often, and that is leading to injuries. I have, I'm currently suffering from shin splints slightly. I've noticed, Ava, who spoke earlier, she has shin splints. It's, it's a very large number of our team that has cap sleeves to try and help with shin splints. They're all seeing the trainer, but there's nothing that we can do other than run on trails. And so, that's, I just would like for you to somehow either get us our trails back, or get us more buses possibly. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to testify on, yes?
Marnie Hartel, speaking for myself. I was appalled to watch on last week's YouTube broadcasted board meeting when one board member rudely interrupted another who was chosen to speak, then argued on how her ideas are somehow out of order, when it is absolutely out of order to interpret another, interrupt another member during their speaking time. It is also against board policy to respond to public testimony received during that evening meeting. I don't care if a public citizen testifies that the earth is flat. It is not becoming of the Board to use Wikipedia to fact-check someone else's cited quotation from a recent book they read. At least, we taught our students to do real research and question validity of their sources. Perhaps board members also so eager to revise policy should read their own current policy, or perhaps should consider stepping down if they cannot adhere to the rules of debate and ethics of the office. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other testimony? Yes. Oh, could you state your name and spell it?
Oh, yes, I'm Caleb Belloy, K-A-L-E-B-B-E-L-O-Y. I was at the last board meeting. So, I'd like to, wait, okay. I'd like to make one more point on the cross-country buses, except not focusing on the shin splint and injuries type, but the, I'd like to put it into the perspective as of the coaches as well, because the coaches, they put a lot of time and effort into our sport to make it fun for us, and they, without these buses, it's hard for them to create new workouts with the same trails and streets that we've been using for the past season. So, it just not only makes it hard on us and our shins, but also on our coaches, because they put a lot of work in, and it makes it hard for them to create new trails and create just new activities to make it fun for all the new freshmen coming in who haven't experienced what cross-country is really like. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other testimony? Yes. If you could state your name and spell it, please.
Tremaine Wilson, T-R-E-M-A-Y-N-E, Wilson. Do any of you guys know who I am and why I'm here? Death speaks volumes. Thanks.
Okay, any other testimony? Okay, hearing none. We're going to move on to consent agenda. Oh, sorry, I just totally skipped over the superintendent. Superintendent update. All right. Thank you, Madam President. The Board has requested an update in regard to PEAKS, and just some understanding. As you know, the PEAKS assessment is online. It's been released by the State of Alaska. We also have that connected to our website. It's, wanted to just share some information with you that could assist with the Board, as well as our community, in understanding the particulars about this, and generally, what one assessment does, doesn't provide answers, it just provides an opportunity to ask more questions. So, I have four questions for you here, in which principals looked at with their schools. And they are, of course, the first one, the first high-level question is, how do the Alaska State Proficiency Standards assessed on PEAKS compared to NAEP? And we've heard quite a bit about NAEP, and Alaska has received criticism in regard to its 2017 NAEP assessment, which stands for National Assessment of Educational Progress that took place. Alaska did finish last in reading in the fourth grade. We will look at how the rigor of our proficiency cut scores from Alaska state standards compare to other states. Just remember that standards represent our expectations and not necessarily our results. So, we'll take a look at those. What are the ASD students' overall district-level trends? This is our third year for this state assessment, and we can take a look and see, are there observable trends? Additionally, when students change proficiency levels, where do they go? And the district took a look at overall scores, and a lot go unknown when we just look at, look at those general trends. What we did is, what about the sample of students? So, we actually narrowed any kid, any child in our district that has taken the test three years in a row, so that wouldn't include a ninth grader three years ago, because that would have only been one test time, or anyone that moved. What do the kids who have taken three tests look like, and where are the proficiency levels now? And then finally, how does attendance affect PEAKS proficiency? We know that it's important, and it's a major school board goal this year. So, we'll start with the first one, and this is the PEAKS and Alaska proficiency standards in relation to the NAEP. The National Assessment of Education Progress is an assessment that samples each state's students in an effort to be able to compare demographically similar samples, so that state-to-state comparisons can be made. So, they do try to match up student groups. And if you take a look, the National Center for Education Statistics, or NCES, they studied each state's cut scores for proficiency standards and compared those standards to the NAEP standards. So, essentially, it's saying each individual state has its own test. How does that test compare to what NAEP is asking of students? Alaska standards are very competitive in compared to other states. As you can see here, there are only two states whose state standards actually meet the ambitious cut scores for NAEP proficiency. The blue arrow shows where Alaska stands in relation to all the other states. So, this is where our cut scores are for our standards, and we know that our standards are the 13th most rigorous out of the 50 states. So, we're quite high in rigor in what we ask of our students, and then our assessment's cut score is also quite high. In fact, what NAEP considers to be basic is all, for all practical purposes, proficient in most states. The takeaway from this slide is that Alaska standards are rigorous enough that if Alaska students can improve their learning as represented by PEAKS, our state's NAEP score should improve as well. So, let's turn to PEAKS instead of NAEP. Overall, ASD students who scored proficient dropped from last year. However, they're still higher than the first year in which students were tested. When we combine student scores in the proficient and advanced categories, or quote, "the pass" categories, we are up slightly since 1617, 1.2% in language arts, English language arts, and 1.7 in math. and 1.7 in math. However, of growing concern is the fact that every grade level in ASD had more students in the far below proficient, up four, over 4% since 1617 in math, or in language arts and 4.7 in math. This is essentially a bimodal distribution and it's a fancy way of saying students are slowing and they're moving to the exits. So they're not in the middle of the bell curve anymore, they're moving to the sides. So this is a bimodal distribution. It's a pretty simple diagram. But what we're seeing in Alaska is that middle red, which is the bell curve, is flattening out and we're seeing more of our students either in the advanced, high proficient category or falling further behind. In terms of PEAK scores, it essentially means more students over time may move into the proficient and advanced and some students who struggle will continue to struggle further. Now we have, student proficiency on PEAKs is, again, the first, blue line is, sorry, 2017 scores, the orange is 18 and this past year, 19, is the yellow. We've only had three years of taking this test. This graph is just meant to show visually that while all grade levels except five and eight have higher percentage of students who are proficient from 16 to 17, which is the difference between the blue and yellow bars, you'll notice that most grade levels except three and nine had drops from last year. This is in line also, you'll see, with the State of Alaska. While we remain overall up slightly and students showing proficient from first PEAKs to this year, this year, students are mostly down across grade levels mirroring the state. Percentage of ASD students who are proficient remains above the state averages in grade levels, all grade levels except for seventh and ninth. And when you hear in the news that we did drop, we did drop from last year, however, from the first year, we're still slightly higher. The PEAKs, English Language Arts, ASD to state comparison, is as shown, we're slightly higher than the state and we're probably about 38% of the state. We make up that N, 38%. And then here's in mathematics. I shared with the board earlier in regard to the English Language Arts test and this was the first year, last year rather, 2019, the last score on there, in which an item called text-dependent analysis occurred. So generally, in these assessments, the kids are used to just selecting A, B, or C. They actually had to write on a computer a constructed response. And text-dependent analysis is just a fancy way to say a written student response. And those, these were the first years that those were included. We had many students who chose just not to even do them. So some kids did the, you know, bubble-in part. They don't bubble because they actually select on a computer, but some kids didn't choose to answer. So there's just lots of different reasons. It's literally, what we find out on PEAKs is how kids decided to tell us what they know on one day out of the year, when they take these. So it really depends on, on not only what they've learned, but also what they decide to share with us as well and the, the ability to share it in the construct that we're asking. The next item I have, I'm going to pass out a piece of paper, but also describe it for, it's a little bit larger. It's the same thing that everyone in the audience or online sees on their screen. I just made a copy. And this might look crazy, but I want to share with you, the, the last question that says, where do kids go? Like, if a kid took a test three years ago, where are they now? And the first thing I'd like to point out is that this past year, we nearly tested 24,000 students. There are only, if you look all the way on the right, there's only 12,895 students in our district that has taken it three times, even though we've doubled that number each year that takes it. So let me explain what this is, and this tells you where the children went. The above graph, the first bullet, represents only students in ASD that have three PEAK scores, so you had to have a score for each one of those. So if you moved to our state, say you were a ninth grader last year, you would only have eighth grade and ninth grade, you wouldn't have. So you had to have three grade levels. The graph looks at student movement between the years, the first year and the last year. It doesn't have anything to do with the middle year, but you had to have that middle year to be represented. The yellow highlights the data for 1617 on the left-hand side. You see, that's the year. And it represents the movement later. The blue does. So on the right in yellow is the number of kids in 201617 that were in each of those categories. Under the blue is where they ended up. So we'll go through one example. For example, they're in the advanced category, which is A, if you go all the way over, the yellow matches the yellow. So 1,159 students were in the advanced category two years ago in 1617, or three years ago, rather. Where were they last year? Of those students, three years ago, last year, these are the categories that they were in. Seven of the advanced students moved to far below proficient. They really just didn't show us what they want. These generally are the students. If you move from advanced to far below, you're, you're just not taking the test. 28 of those were below proficient. Of those 1,159, 387 kids are now in proficient and 737 remained in advanced. So a lot of times when you move, you, you want to know, what are kids demonstrating for us and what are the trends? This is just, that was a question that our principals asked, so we then dug deeper and looked at all 24,000 students who took the test last year, found the nearly 13,000 that had three scores, that demonstrates our mobility. And then we looked, where were they three years ago? And then the next question would be, well, I wonder why they're there. So I, I just wanted to demonstrate the difficulty in, in any kind of analysis on assessments. We should take it for the face value. It was what kids wanted to show us that day. It is part of our district report card. We can't dismiss it or can we bank everything on it? And we really look at what can we do for students? This isn't a picture of students. What we do is put a mirror to ourselves and reflect ourselves. How do our schools look? Who are these students then? The seven of them that moved to far below? Who are the 28? Are they in certain schools? Are they in certain grades? Are they certain student groups? We continue to ask ourselves, not to catch ourselves in the "I gotcha," but to say, how can we improve tomorrow from today? And so this is just a mini look at PEAKs. Next to come out at the end of this month are what's called school designations. And those are what the state, universal supports, targeted supports, or comprehensive supports. And those, a lot of times, our parents are interested in those, according to what, what does my school look like? I want to remind everyone that these data, along with lots of others, whether it's attendance categories or discipline categories, we have those on our website. Anybody can view them. It's on our data dashboard. The last question that we wanted to look at, that principals had asked, we wanted to share with the board, is, and it's on the back of your sheet, it's really, does attendance really matter in school in according to these assessments? And the board has one of its goal that 90% of our kids will be in school 90% of the time. That means you can only miss, I think about nine days of school throughout the entire year. And if you take a look, we have English Language Arts proficiency and Math proficiency. It's separated by that black line. Again, advanced and proficient means kind of passing, below proficient and far below. You want the gray and the gold to be small and you are okay with the orange and blue to, to gain. So students that have the 90% attendance score at about, in the passing or non-passing categories, about, on somewhere between 8 to 15% above kids who aren't here. So we do know, one of the things here, this would suggest that, boy, being in school does matter. And so these are, again, just another question. Those four questions were questions that came from school administrators when we looked at the PEAKs. We wanted to share with the board the type of analysis and continue to dig into it that we do to help answer some questions. And with that, that completes this part of the PEAKs assessment. I think the board wanted just a icing on the cake, a top of it, and we can certainly create a work session for questions and just really dig in deeper as the board sees fit. But in two weeks, again, more data are to come. They'll be presented publicly by the Department of Education and Early Development, which is our state department. The next item, I did have, ask Tom, Tom Roth, to, to share some information in regard to busing with the board. I do want to share, because I, I did hear about budget, I, I did quote that it wasn't a budget item in, in the fact that we didn't cut the budget for busing. There is presently $400,000 for coaches, for premier coaches, outside of the district's busing, that is provided district-wide for secondary schools. In looking at the problem that we had, secondary looked and that 400,000 would be kind of swept up, the year's budget would be swept up in the first quarter if we didn't. But it wasn't that from last year to this year, the budget was cut, it's just that the expenses this year probably rose. So the revenue wasn't cut, but the expenses rose. I asked Tom to really just share a little bit about the reason we're having this real problem that we're hearing from our students and our parents, physicians, in regard to equitable places to, to practice and, and meets and really all sports. It affects more than just cross-country. And so we have some information that Tom can just share and, do you have the paper?
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Through, through the president, I'll ask Katie to, to pass that out. So, so if I might, and it certainly is not to downplay, you know, some of the concerns raised by, by students and, and parents of, of South High School. So, so it really is a, a supply and demand matter. Dr. Bishop talked to the contract busing piece, but from an ASD and Reliant standpoint, it is matching requirements to available resources. And, and I asked Katie to provide you with the document to, to kind of showcase, this really is a, a day-to-day, in many cases, many times a day, communication and coordination that happens between Heather Philp in, in Student Transportation and Holly Zumbro in Secondary, who manages activities, where, where they are literally doing the stubby pencil drill several times a day to try to make sure that we are matching the resources, in, in some cases, as they come available that day, to, to meet the, the requirements. So the supply is, and, and I think it's been mentioned, there, there are bus driver shortages and they're primarily in Reliant. We, we are seeing gradual relief in that number of drivers, which, which is, is helping, I think, and over the long term, it will. So, you know, where, where are we? We, we are operating under, under certain priorities. The first being is that we support the core mission to move students to and from schools to their home. The second is that we meet the, the requirement for scheduled competitions meets and then the, you know, the third priority is to support practices. And, and you'll see there that there are a number of different activities that are being supported. So I'll, I'll pause and happily entertain any comments or questions.
Ms. Mitchell?
So I understand that we have issues with the school buses, the district buses in Reliant, but my understanding is that in past years, we, the district has contracted with Premier Busing to transport students. When I've talked to a couple of the coaches, that it was not Reliant or the school district. And I also understand that South had found another bus company that was able to actually do it for, for less and they were also told by Premier that their rates have not changed from last year. So I'm just curious how that factors into this.
So through, through the president to, to member Mitchell. So yes, Premier is, is the contract company that, that's been supporting the district. The other, the other company you're referencing is called BAC. And it's, right, right now, they are going through a vetting process. They, they, the company does not carry the requisite insurance coverage, for one, and the vehicles, in order for them to be able to transport students, vehicles have to pass an inspection. So that's, that's a work in progress, but that's where we are in terms of being able to add BAC to the, the available vendors to move ASD students.
And in regard to Premier, that's what I had stated. So in regard to the $400,000 that the, is towards secondary busing, we do use Premier for activities buses. However, when we, we looked at the cost of just this quarter, if we were to supply buses, the district-wide 400,000 would be used just for practices where we wouldn't have the funds for the rest of the year. So it was determined by Secondary that, that the use of Premier would eliminate that 400,000 that was in the budget for the entire year, for all schools.
So that's a change from last year, the money? I mean, last year, they did have the?
Last year was the exact same money, it just wasn't the same need. The, the market calls for more this year because we don't have. Last year, we didn't have as such a shortage as we did this year. We literally took 17 of our activity drivers and took them off of activities and put them on routes. We didn't do that last year.
Okay. I, I'm just trying to figure out why the, why the running teams don't have the buses available to them this year that they did last year, because they said they used Premier last year, but I, we can have this discussion.
Right. Last year, the amount of time for Premier wasn't, it wasn't, you know, twice a week, every, every week. Because we, we used them intermittently when we needed to and the, the need for it would literally run out that 400,000 that we need for every sport all year long. For games. Thanks. Mr. Holloman?
I think that answers my question, which was, there's, there's a greater need for, for an outside contractor this time and that stems from the fact that the main contractor has a shortage. And so Premier is a much more expensive option than, than our primary contractor is. Because apparently, using Premier frequently drains the budget where if our primary contractor wasn't experiencing a shortage, we would be able to transport.
So our primary contractor is from school to home, which is the first priority in busing, so that's Reliant, school to home. Activities buses are ASD employees. What we've had to do is take ASD employees and fill as sub-bus drivers for Reliant to bring students to and from school, not activities. So then, that doesn't leave drivers for activities. The drivers that we do have, the priority are games, especially varsity games. And so basically, there's a priority list and practices are at, at the bottom of that list. Mr. Holloman?
Do we foresee the shortage continuing? I mean, but?
That's a good question, I would like. How, how long would this?
So through, through the, through the president to member Holloman. So the district is continuing to, to train drivers. It's, it is a slow process and there is a fairly involved vetting process to make sure that, that drivers are eligible to, to drive school buses and that's, that's measured in months. So I mean, not, and not to prolong the discussion, we're, we're still kind of seeing drivers come back from, from their summer employment with some of the commercial driving, the, the tour companies as an example. And then, you know, probably the biggest thing that we have to wrestle with is, you know, we're, we frankly are competing with, with other, other organizations that require people with commercial driver's licenses. And that really is the, you know, the critical path for us, is getting people that, that have a CDL and same for other agencies.
Mr. Holloman?
And, and so from the contractor's side, did they have something happen or they, they're just simply in a competitive job market and they can't find people?
I think so. I, that's, that's our evaluation, is that it's, it's, it's competitive and it's, again, when you think about the, the school bus industry, they're, they're driving nine and a half months out of the year. That two and a half month window, they, they can't afford not to work. So when they pick up jobs with Princess Cruises as an example, and they extend their, their summer season through the end of September into October, they're not ready or able to come back to their district job until the summer season ends.
Ms. Mitchell?
So if the teams had been able to, if they'd known ahead of time and they had been able to somehow set up a huge number of carpool options, that would have worked, but we can't, can't use the BAC option. Is that correct?
I'll have to review that question. I don't have the detail on that. Secondary end is working with that. I can get back to the board. Is there any other comments or questions? Thank you, Dr. Bishop. Thank you, Madam President. That concludes my report. I think probably just in time. I think probably just in time. So we're moving on to consent agenda. I'll do it.
I move to approve the consent agenda, ASD memorandum number 017, personnel report, September 3, 2019, executive and work session minutes.
Second.
Board members, please vote. Okay, next is action items. And before we move into that, I want to talk about the procedures for agenda item testimony. An action item memo is first introduced by the Vice President and is seconded by another board member. I will open up the floor for public testimony. If you have signed up in advance or indicated you are interested in public providing testimony, I will call you to come to the front table to speak. You have three minutes to talk, and you will see a timer on the screen to your left to monitor the time remaining and inform you of when you need to conclude. After all testimony closes, I will open the floor for board discussion, followed by the student board representative vote, before finally calling for an official vote. The voting results will be displayed on the screen to your left.
I move to approve ASD memorandum number 033, and authorize the superintendent to accept a donation from the Office of U.S. Fish and Wildlife for 10 Paul Reed Smith handmade electric guitars valued at $54,319.
Second.
Bruce, Dr. Wood. You want to share some information with us on this donation?
This won't take long on a board evening where you have so much to do, but I thought it important to let you know sort of what has happened and encourage your acceptance of this wonderful donation. To my left here is Chris Andrews, who's a wildlife inspector with U.S. Fish and Wildlife. And as you may know, if you saw the news article, they seized some guitars that were on a flight to Hong Kong, and they had rosewood in them, and without special permission, you can't sell that and ship it overseas. What I'm astonished by and so pleased is that when they came to the ownership of the, you know, U.S. federal government and U.S. Fish and Wildlife, is that they thought of us. And so I got an email from Ryan McCullough, also working at U.S. Fish and Wildlife, asking if I was interested, and I didn't really know what he was asking me to be interested in. So, but I met him here in the parking lot, and...
That sounds fishy.
It sounds very surreptitious, but, so I unloaded these 10 boxes and took them out onto a fine arts base, and then my AA and I opened one and saw what was inside, and for the next 45 minutes, our jaws were on the floor opening all 10 of these. And anyway, so I brought one, because they're kind of heavy, I wasn't going to bring all 10, and I thought I'd show it to you.
Thank you. Should I get an amp?
I didn't get an amp.
These are Paul Reed Smith guitars made in his workshop in Maryland. Paul Reed Smith makes guitars for Santana, and, I mean, he makes the best in the world. And we now have 10 of them in our district. Nine have gone out to high schools in the district, and we're going to keep this one at Fine Arts for the occasional middle school that might need an electric guitar for a band or all-state or some other functions that we might have. So this is the one we're going to hang on to. And so the overall donation, as you can see in the memorandum, is a little over $50,000, $54,000, and we have Chris Andrews and Fish and Wildlife to thank for that.
So what colors did we get?
Oh my gosh, there, of the 10, there are nine different ones. This one is kind of a matte finish, some of them are high gloss, some of them look like aquamarine, and I've forgotten which high school got which one, but, and I want to thank Deena for participating in the Oprah giveaway of these, because we, I told the teachers at our in-service that we, I told them the story, and I was truthful, except that I said that we had gotten one guitar. And so we reached into a jar and pulled out a name, and then Deena said, you know, I just don't think that's quite fair. I think, I think we have another one here. And so it went, and you get a guitar, and you get a guitar, and you get a guitar, until we had all of our high school directors out, and it was so much fun.
Exciting. Well, thank you, sir, and thank you for your service with the state, and thank you for this generous, very generous donation to the school district. And there, yes.
And if I played guitar with the other issues that are up tonight, I really should do the Jimi Hendrix version of the Star Spangled Banner, but I don't know how to do that, you know, so...
Did you want to say anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to state that, kind of on a more somber note, the trade and the material these guitars are made out of, it's an endangered species, and the illegal wildlife trade is just behind illegal drugs and illegal firearms in value, in world value. So as these are being played at the different schools, I hope that message is passed along to the students that it's a protected species, and I hope that our conservation efforts help make sure that, in the future, that these are still being made.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. So we kind of circumvented that process a little bit, but is there any public testimony on this memorandum, 033? No public testimony, is there any board discussion? Ms. Hildy.
Y'all know, I'm just jumping on my skin. This is very exciting, and for students to get to play on instruments of this high caliber, I mean, it just excites them to know, and, you know, whatever passion that our wonderful teachers are already instilling in them, it just makes it so real, so, and to have that tied to, you know, the endangered aspect of rosewood and the international aspect of trading, and what a wonderful opportunity for our students. So I'm just, I can't wait to hear them play.
Mr. Holloman.
Yeah, it's wonderful that he thought of the district, I'm sorry, he's already gone, but, and also found the right connection point. And I'll say that I've run into people at times that had something they thought might be of value to the district, they can't always, they don't always know where to go. It might be something for the website, or to, because we need a point person to interface. I'll say at a time when I was at a middle school and I was looking for certain kinds of donations related to technology, I was talking with a parent that said, I also have a baby grand piano that I would give away if someone will get it out of the second floor of my house. And that was way outside my lane, and I also had issues at the time because I was the guy that kept dragging all this junk to the building, which is a whole separate story that Mr. Flackenstein's familiar with and everything. And I was kind of like, well, I don't want to get in trouble for that, because I, but I happened to mention it to the music teacher a few days later, and he was, he couldn't believe I waited to talk to him. There are folks in the community that will do great things for us, sometimes they just don't know how to connect. And why did this happen so well? I hope we are aware, I hope all staff members are aware, and when somebody wants to help us, that we find a way to let that happen. There are some great things out there.
Thank you, Mr. Holloman. Okay, if there's no other comments, student vote.
Yes.
Board members, please vote. And that memorandum 033 passes with seven yeas unanimously.
I move to approve ASD memorandum number 028, and pass revisions to Board Policy 6115, ceremonies and observances.
At this time, I would ask if there's any public testimony, and I do have some individuals signed up that I will call first. The first one is Dawn Moppet, thank you, sorry, apologize, and Marnie Hartel, if you'd come up also, please.
Okay, I would like to make two points on this. And the first point, I'd like to read an article that reads, despite the overwhelming amount of public testimony favoring a proposal to play the National Anthem or the state flag song, once a week in each Anchorage school, members of the Anchorage School Board opted to send this discussion back to committee, which in my opinion is just trying to kill something in committee. So my first point is to remind the board that we are a republic. We don't get to vote on these matters, but we do get to vote on representatives who vote for us as our proxy. But it seems after reading this article, like some members of this board are not voting as our proxy, but for their own agenda or personal feelings on this matter. My second point is that the school districts is supposed to be an education for the kids. I also understand that there is a policy to promote patriotism. So why not use this as a learning opportunity for the kids while at the same time promote patriotism? There's a lot of history to teach these kids, for many of the items are considered patriotic, like the National Anthem and the Pledge of Allegiance. As an example, where do these originate from? Where are these adopted? Some key facts about things like our National Anthem. Francis Scott Key was not imprisoned on a British warship when he penned his verses. He was actually dispatched by President Madison on a mission from Baltimore to negotiate a release of Dr. Peens as a prominent surgeon captured in the Battle of Bensburg. The key was not hailed as the twilight's last gleaming and did not fly through the perilous flight. In addition to the bombs falling, there was a rainstorm that fell on Fort McKinley, McHenry, throughout the night in the Battle of Baltimore. The forty-foot, the fort's 35-by-42-foot garrison flag was so massive that it required 11 people to haul it, to raise it, to hoist it. When it was wet, it weighed almost 500 pounds and snapped the flagpole. So when the rain poured down, a small storm flag, which was not smaller, flew in its place. In the morning, when the rain stopped, they took down the rain-soaked storm flag and put the bigger one up, and that's the one that Francis Scott Key saw. So my point is, is that to use the National Anthem and the Americans as some of these to, as a learning thing, a learning opportunity for the kids. So there's a lot of these examples. So if we bring out these facts, little by little, every time you play the National Anthem, or when you pledge allegiance to the flag, it's not just listening to a song or reacting to words, but it puts some meaning and understanding to them. And I'm quite confident that if after you play these songs or recite these words, you water drip this information to the kids, and you'll end up with a bucket full of knowledge.
Thank you, sir.
Marnie Hartel, speaking for myself. School board members who pride themselves on increasing the efficiencies of our district and cutting wasteful spending should be ashamed of themselves for wasting tax dollars by forcing multiple inquiries to administration, as well as surveys asking principals how many times they play specific songs in schools. Instead, they should be asking how our principals are addressing teacher quality and retention. Maybe the board could be looking into ways to prevent distracted driving. The leading cause of death for teens is texting while driving. We aren't teaching our students about that. How are we preparing our children for an Alaska that is no longer dependent on oil, has affordable housing, lower energy costs, and no longer the highest healthcare cost in the nation? Instead, we want to talk about ceremonies and songs, but we won't talk about the hard facts of what causes poor attendance, and what is the leading cause of dropouts. Why is our school board not talking about the Apex Credit Recovery Program, which was abused in Lower 48 for, pardon me, I lost my place, was abused in the Lower 48 district to inflate graduation rates at the expense of student learning? Let's focus our attention on our diverse population and their needs. Will the anthem help address my students entering the classroom who did not sleep much last night because they share a bedroom with two younger siblings in a small apartment? Will the anthem help address my students entering the classroom without having had breakfast this morning? Where in the book of Hattie's meta-analysis of research found in the book Invisible Learning does it cite evidence that singing songs and performing ceremonies once a month will improve educational outcomes? How about mindfulness and meditation? Can we mandate that every day students will practice at least 10 to 15 minutes of meditation? At least the research supports that, but here we are wasting time talking about the precise frequency by which we ought to hear a National Anthem and state song. What about using this time on the school board to look into special education issues? Why so many teacher positions and support TA positions go unfilled? As for the Alaska's flag song, Alaska's children are no longer living on the, quote, "gold of the early sourdough's dreams," unquote. We are watching whales rot and overheated fish wash ashore. Let's get focused on what the future graduate needs to succeed and stop wasting time with ceremonious mandates about how often we play songs out loud. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could have Kevin McGee and...
Is it Shanor?
I can't read the writing, I'm sorry.
Oh, thank you.
And Kevin, you can go first when you see the clock.
Good evening, members of the Anchorage School Board and Superintendent Bishop. In reference to the Anchorage School District member, the Honorable Dave Donley proposed change to Anchorage School District policy. As the president of the NAACP Anchorage branch, we are opposed against his proposal as it reads. Please be advised that the NAACP is not opposed to the National Anthem, but let's be clear about what should be important in the Anchorage School District. The purpose of attending public school is not to show patriotism, love for or devotion to one's country, but to learn the fundamentals of education, reading, writing, math, et cetera. If the purpose of this proposal is to adequately prioritize our teaching, the history, culture, and traditions that allegedly unify us as citizens of the United States, then why not tell the whole truth about the United States? Not just the parts that sound good to a certain part of society? What about slavery, internment camps, then and now, Jim Crow laws? In the absence of the President of the United States realizing the moral high ground, we as civil rights leaders must take the lead. The position of the POTUS is to cut adequate funding for public schools through his Secretary of Education. He complains that anyone who takes a knee during the playing of the National Anthem is unpatriotic, when the real purpose of taking a knee is based on police brutality. As a U.S. Army veteran, I feel that it's unpatriotic that the Commander-in-Chief never put on the uniform during the Vietnam War because of alleged bone spurs. The failed approach to this proposal is that the third verse of the National Anthem is considered discriminatory to some. The mere words are found to be hurtful to some. Quote, "No refuge could save the heirling and slave from the terror of flight or the gloom of the grave," end quote. What the ASD school board could do better, the educational approach is to develop a sincere program to improve our children's reading and math proficiencies. Work with the NAACP in developing a reading lab for our children. Last but not least, listening to the National Anthem will never improve our children's proficiencies in reading and math. Thank you.
Thank you. See the clock up there begin. See the clock up there again.
Ladies and gentlemen of the school board, after reading about Mr. Dave Donnelly's proposal on ADN, I felt as if I had an obligation to speak up as a member of my school. My name is Shanon Tahada, and I'm a senior from Stellar Secondary, a school of roughly 300 students. Stellar Secondary is what some would call unconventional. We are unlike any of the Big Eight high schools. We do not have sports teams or frequent school assemblies. So by practice, we cannot play the anthems regularly. But with all due respect, I do not believe that my school, any student, staff, or parent, is any less patriotic than a school that recites the pledge every morning and plays the anthems on a regular basis. Promoting patriotism is the point of the proposal, and I would have to say that if we as a community seeks to be more patriotic, then we should start with a conversation on the meaning of the songs and pledge, rather than reciting it daily or singing it every week. We cannot teach patriotism. Members of society learn to be proud of who they are and what their country stands for on their own. We cannot give each other a false sense of patriotism. Our first president warned us about it. Guard against imposters of pretended patriotism. Singing, um, excuse me, singing songs and reciting words do not make us patriotic. What makes every individual of society patriotic is standing up for what is right and just, fighting for the rule of law, and defending the freedom that some are still seeking. Patriotism cannot and should not be measured by who can sing the anthems most beautifully or who can recite the Pledge of Allegiance most eloquently. Patriotism is about being proud of our home, our state, and our nation. And if we want our kids to be more patriotic, then we should start not with singing the anthems and reciting the pledge, rather start with policy and people that our students can be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Next individuals, no clapping, please. Eleanor Andrews and Rick Smith. And Eleanor, you'll go first.
Dr. Bishop, board members and staff, I didn't know this was going to be a tag team. Do we have to be aligned?
I don't think we have.
Oh, okay. I have not testified at a school board meeting in about 20 years, so pardon me. I was in public service, and as Mr. Donnelly would know, he had the same job. Being Commissioner of Administration is daunting. You are there to regulate and find compliance with all the laws and policies that the state is responsible for. So I laud you for your service here. It's difficult. This is not a full-time paid job, but as people on the school board, when you go to the grocery store, the gym, everybody knows you, and they want to ask you a question, they want you to give them an answer that satisfies them. So I didn't know about this whole brouhaha until last week, and I thought, well, I don't understand what this is supposed to fix. Have we had a measurement for students' patriotism? Are we going to have a test on whether they know the words? I didn't know what the Star Spangled Banner meant till I was a junior in high school, and we talked about it for a whole semester in civics. I don't think it's relevant, and I think it wastes time. My daughter works at a Title I school where half the kids' English is not their first language. They're trying to give them breakfast, solve transportation, family problems or whatever, and adding something like this to their plate, which I believe would be meaningless in an elementary school, is just not worth it. So I hope that you think about it from the aspect of the teachers, the students. If there's a problem that we want to fix, I'd like to know, have someone explain to me what this solution really would do. Thank you.
My name's Rick Smith. I'm a retired teacher with ASD. I taught at Birchwood ABC for 26 years, all in that same building. If any of you are familiar with the ABC program, it is a highly patriotic building, program, philosophy. We have a lot of students that come from military families, and we're very proud of that. Like I said, I left three years ago, and in my classroom, I taught, while there, I taught fourth through eighth grade, mostly sixth grade. We did the pledge and a patriotic song every day. We were also one of the schools that consistently showed top test scores. In that way, I believe that was part of that is because we had a culture in the building that started with being an American. And I can, I can look around this room, and we're all of different colors, we're all of different faiths and religions or races, whatever it is. Our thinking is different, but we're all Americans. And though you and I might disagree, we're still Americans, and that's what makes us Americans, is that we can disagree. I believe that being a patriot to this country, I think is very important. And I would teach my students every year that in our country, we were always known as a melting pot. And I'd draw a thing on the board that would show up, a pot, and we'd say, let's throw in a whole bunch of cheeses. You can throw in every type of cheese, and they're all going to melt and become fondue. That's America. But what we have today is more of a stew. You can throw carrots in, you can throw meat, you can throw potatoes, celery, and it's a stew. So we've become this conglomerate of people who still want to hold on to their cultures, their past, and there's nothing wrong with that. So long as we look at the stew and we still say, we're Americans. I've heard people say that doing the pledge and doing a patriotic song every day takes too much time. We'd get it done in five minutes, 10 minutes. We'd have announcements, and we'd move on. That was the beginning of our day. But it solidified a culture that I believe this country is starting to forget. As Americans, we've overcome a lot in our history. We've had bad times. We have history that we're rather ashamed of in cases, but we're still Americans, and we're always moving forward. And I think that's what patriotism is, and that is what I think that the pledge and patriotic songs bring together. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one other individual. Yes, that we're going to be calling, and then I'll ask for additional testimony. Okay, there's no answer. We'll try again in a few minutes. Is there anyone else that would like to testify? Yes, sir, come forward and state your name and spell it, please.
My name's Jim Miller, J.I.M.M.I.L.L.E.R. Thank you, President Marset. I wanted to thank Dave Donnelly for at least bringing this to the public attention, and it just makes me wonder what is relevant anymore? Is our Constitution relevant? At what point do we just start forgetting little things like the National Anthem, Law and Order? And if you look throughout cities in the Lower Forty-Eight, they're tearing down monuments that were respectful to the people that participated in the Civil War. And though I'm not a black person, I may not understand that hurt that many of you feel, it's still a part of your history. Like it or not, whether we like it or not, we have to own up to what we've done in the past, try to make it right in the future, but just forget our past as it's irrelevant. So I think that the Star Spangled Banner is relevant, and it shouldn't hurt anybody to listen to it for whatever length of time it takes once a month. But thank you, Dave Donnelly, for bringing it to our public attention. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to testify? Again, please state your name and spell it.
Hello, board members. My name is Ashley Gaines, A.S.H.L.E.I.G.H. Gaines. I'm a graduate of West Anchorage High School and just received my bachelor's in 2017 from I graduated from high school, and I found it pretty troubling that as a student of color that when going through high school that I had to take Native Studies, but when it came to black, it's good to learn about the land that you're on, but when it came to Black History Month, it was not really taught in the schools, and black history is American history. The first time I had a Black History class or that taught Black Studies was at Barlett High School taught by, who is now a principal at Henshu, Ms. Lakita Banks. I will say, just to educate the board a little bit, we want to talk about playing, I think, playing the National Anthem is not going to make anybody more patriotic. We are all Americans, as the other gentleman said, and, you know, being Americans makes us patriotic. I mean, many of us today are more patriotic even than our own president. And just to educate the board, since a lot of people here are educators, if we're going to teach history, you need to teach the whole history, not just Martin Luther King and Rosa Parks. And at the time that the National Anthem was written, people of color, black people, were only three-fifths of human. We weren't even considered humans in the United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to testify? Yes. Just go ahead and come up. And if you could state your name and spell it, please.
My name is Wilbert Mickens, W.I.L.B.E.R.T., last name M.I.C.K.E.N.S. I'm really not here to testify, I'm here to sing. Because my daughter proudly sang the National Anthem at Eagle River High School for so many years, for football games and basketball games, and she's really proud of the National Anthem because her dad was a 21-year veteran of the United States Air Force. And so we taught the values of being a patriot without the school's help, but daddy messed around and made a mistake. He told his daughter that there were four verses to the National Anthem. Many school board members didn't even know that, but since we have an award-winning history student here, I mean, teacher here, we will remand you to Barlett High School. And where is that man who so vauntingly swore that the havoc of war and the battle's confusion? A home and a country shouldn't leave us no more. Their blood has wiped out their foul footsteps pollution. No refuge could save the harling and slave from the terror of flight or the gloom of the grave. And the Star Spangled Banner in triumphed wave. Everybody know this line. Oh, the land of the free. Can't hear you. And the home of the brave. That broke my daughter's heart, that she lived in a nation that thought it was very pliable nation to make sure that they triumph over harlings and slaves, that they could no longer escape from it or the gloom of the grave. So I don't think, even though I'm for all four verses, all four verses of the National Anthem, that it's going to bring much unity when it comes to our students' concern. Teach the whole history. Same melody, different words.
Thank you.
My name is Jacque Demures, J.A.C.Q.U.E.L.I.N.E.D.E.M.U.R.S. I'm an AP Gov student at Eagle River High School. I'm a senior, and honestly, I wasn't counting on participating in this until the subject came up. I didn't know the subject was coming up. But I'm a daughter of, my father is active in the military, he actually drove me here to this meeting for my class that is required. I'll be honest with you, I and most students don't really think about the Pledge of Allegiance or the National Anthem. It's just this tedious thing that we do every day, until you have a discussion about what you're actually saying. And 99% of the time you're in school, you don't have that discussion, until you're in a history class that takes the time to do it, and discussions like this with people about the history of it, missing lyrics of it, what it means to different people, and the missing history of America itself. Luckily, the past classes I've taken, like AP Gov and my history class last year from Miss Ballard, we took the time to take modern history and discuss about the past history that affects it now. Up until last year, I knew zero history inside school about queer history, a very limited history, other than Martin Luther King, Rosa Parks, about African-American history. So I'm not against the National Anthem or anything like that. I don't particularly feel patriotic singing it or saying it until it's 9/11 or my dad is currently out of state or is out of the nation. Until it affects you or you really think about it, you don't really feel patriotic about it. You're just saying the same words you're told to say every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and we have our gentleman on the phone, Tobias Shorener. Sorry. Anyway, we're going to let him testify, and if there's anyone else that would like to testify, just please come up to the front.
Tremaine Wilson, T.R.E.M.A.Y.N.E. My name is Tobias Schwer, S.T.H.W.O.E.R.E.R. I would be testifying against this proposal at a time when we're talking about minutes in the day of our students. I believe that mandating, mandating anything about singing a certain song that should instill patriotism, I think is the wrong, wrong approach. We should be teaching in civic class about the meaning of the National Anthem and such things, and in music class, sing those songs. That's all fine and good, and I think that's part of the education that our children should, children should receive. But I don't think a mandate from the top down requiring the National Anthem to be sung is the right approach here. And I think we should be first focusing on our priorities, and those are performative in the classroom, the race vote, and also, I think, while we are living in a very, one of the most culturally diverse school districts in the country, we should be teaching and facilitating integration across cultures before we mandate from the top a certain song to be sung about, you know, the unity. It should, the unity of a country should come from the heart and should come to integration. And I don't think this proposal really does that. It's not very well thought out, and it's not really coming from the ground up. And so I hope the school board considers a no vote on this, clearly. And I think it's, I can't, I can't really look at this in a way of not seeing the partisanship in the board member that proposed it and in the rapport. I would consider very conservative, one-sided approach to pushing certain, you know, maybe political views into this arena. I just can't look at this without, without seeing that. I don't see the impartiality of this proposal. And so I end my testimony here and hope the board considers a no vote on this, a clear no vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And now, sir, I'm sorry, could you state your name and spell it?
Tremaine Wilson, T.R.E.M.A.Y.N.E.
Tremaine Wilson, T-R-E-M-A-Y-N-E. Does anyone here on the board know who John Hanson is? No? And you're talking about the National Anthem? I mean, come on. Serious? He's somebody from the United States in the 1700s? Nobody? That shows.
Sir, we don't respond to public testimony. It's for us to listen and you to talk.
I can tell by the look on your face that you don't know who he is. So what did you say, sir? I rest my case.
Would anyone else like to testify? Okay, if there's no one else, I'm going to open this up for board discussion and comments. Mr. Donlin.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam President. First of all, I really appreciate the public testimony tonight. Thank you to all the testifiers for caring enough about our schools and coming out to testify. And I remind the Board that the last time the proposal was before us in the form of playing the National Anthem once a week, there were some 30 people testified in favor of it and about three testified against it. This proposal does not call for the singing of the National Anthem, and it certainly doesn't call for the singing of the third verse. I can only remember hearing the third verse sung a couple of times in my entire lifetime. You know, worldwide, the American National Anthem is known for its first verse. I mean, right now, the protesters in Hong Kong that are trying to get freedom from Communist China are singing the American National Anthem during their demonstrations, and they're singing the first verse. That's what people all over the world know. But as the meaning of the third verse has been raised, and we very rightly should examine what the actual meaning of it is. So let's put it in the context of, this is a poem. The lyrics of the Star Spangled Banner are a poem about the Battle of Fort McHenry. And it's about what happened that night. And the first sentence of the third paragraph reads, "And where is that band who so violently swore that the havoc of war and the battle's confusion, a home and a country should leave us no more?" Well, the first paragraph, first sentence in any paragraph or stanza sets out the context, the subject matter for that particular paragraph. We all know that from English class. So they reference, the poem referenced "that band." So in the context of the Battle of Fort McHenry, that band is obviously the British sailors and soldiers. That's what this is talking about, the British sailors and soldiers that are attacking Baltimore. Goes on to talk about, "Their blood has wiped out the foul footsteps' pollution." In other words, the Americans have been victorious in killing more British than British killed Americans. "And no refuge could save the hireling and slave." So in the context of the British military, who could possibly hire, who could possibly be hirelings and slave? Well, we know that during the American Revolution, the British Armed Forces consisted of hirelings, the Hessians, the hated Hessians, German soldiers that were mercenaries that terrorized the American colonies. Those were the hirelings. So that is the logical reference here for hirelings. And who could possibly be the reference to slaves? Well, to free Americans at that time, British subjects were slaves because they served a king and they weren't independent. They didn't have a democracy. They didn't have a republic. Because they were under a king, they were essentially not free people as the Americans were. So once again, that subject, that reference is to the British sailors and soldiers. This is even more significant because one of the key articulated reasons for the War of 1812 was impressment. And that was the practice by the British Navy, where they would impress even British citizens and American citizens, including a lot of American sailors, into service in the British Navy. They were essentially slaves to the British Navy because they had no choice in that. They were forced to serve in the British Armed Forces. And that was one of the key reasons that America went to war in the War of 1812, was to stop the practice of impressment by the British of American citizens. Clearly, that also could be related to hirelings and the terminology that's used here. So continuing to talk about the Battle of Fort McHenry, from the terror of the night or the gloom of the grave, and that's again referring to the terror that the American defense inflicted on the British because they left. Even after their success in Washington DC, after their defeat at Baltimore, the British Armed Forces withdrew. And the gloom of the grave, they suffered pretty serious casualties during the Battle of Fort McHenry. So, "And the Star Spangled Banner in triumph doth wave." Well, the British American forces won the battle. Or the land of the free and the home of the brave. The land of the free as compared to British subjects, which were not free because they served a king, which Americans rejected in the Revolutionary War. We did not want to be subjects of a king. So I understand there's a lot of emotion to this. But if you look at it in the historical context, that's what's being discussed here, folks. They're referencing the British Armed Forces, the British Navy and the British soldiers that were attacking us that evening in Baltimore. That's what these references are to. It's not, really doesn't fit any other way within the context of the full poem and the third, and specifically the third verse. So if there's disagreement about what that meaning is, the answer is not to ban or discourage playing of officially illegal National Anthem, but rather, and especially here, where the motion before us neither calls for or compels the use of the words to the National Anthem, and certainly not the third verse. But rather, the appropriate thing is to have an academic discussion regarding, within music curriculum, which now we do have ensured to happen, which didn't, wasn't happening by all music teachers before this proposal because the surveys indicated that not all our music teachers were following the adopted curriculum and teaching the National Anthem. But they now have agreed to do so. And that would be the appropriate place to have these kinds of discussions on what the third verse actually references and talks about. So we can have that academic discussion in that kind of a format, and I welcome it. As I stated, the proposal in no way compels anyone to sing the National Anthem. It would simply amend existing policy that says it is the policy of the Anchorage School District to promote patriotism to ensure that the National Anthem and the state flag song are played at least once a month in our schools. Played, not sang. They could take place at an assembly, over the loudspeakers, at a sporting event, at a concert. We leave that full discretion up to the individual schools to decide. And there are many schools already doing this, but not all schools. In the surveys that we've conducted, there are clearly some of our larger schools that prior to this moment in time at least identified that they never played the National Anthem in those schools. That was their response, Madam President, never. So it does seem appropriate to have the National Anthem played at least occasionally within our schools because it is our National Anthem. There's just so few things that unite us as Americans. We obviously go to great lengths, and rightfully so, to honor diversity in our country and respect that. But at the same time, there's a common culture that we as Americans need to share as, because we're in America. We're a country. That's what countries have. There's a common culture, and that common culture provides them with strength, provides them with a degree of unity. And that's essential for the success of any country. Because a country divided against itself, as one of our best presidents said, cannot stand. So the playing of the National Anthem is perfectly appropriate. I think it's one of those few unifying customs that Americans share, unifying features such as our Declaration of Independence, our United States Constitution, which I mentioned here on Constitution Day, by the way, Madam Chair, President, which has been celebrated in many, many of our schools this day. Our flag, a lot of our patriotic songs, and clearly the National Anthem. So our founding fathers knew that when they adopted e pluribus unum or from many one as a national motto. It recognizes that a group of diverse people, which are here in America as opposed to some European countries and other countries around the world that are very, very homogeneous, have the same basic populations and cultures for centuries. We don't have that here. We have a diverse cultures coming together into one. And that diverse people bring the strengths of many cultures, uniting them into one culture. I believe it has produced the greatest and strongest nation in the history of mankind. I believe in American exceptionalism. I believe that our country goes out and does good things in the world. And because of that, is exceptional and special compared to many, many, many other countries over the centuries and generations. And as our nation becomes even more diverse, some of the widely shared traditions are seeming to fade away. And I just really think that as schools, we should try to preserve in an educational and patriotic way some of those historical traditions of the United States. Thank you.
Mr. Holloman.
I want to say I didn't support the motion when it was weakly. And I want to note that sending it to committee, people should be able to tell that when we send things to committee, that they don't die. They do come back. We're not the legislature. They have a system for that. Send it to the legislative, or to the committee so it could be reworked and come back. And that's the only reason we're considering it tonight. I do support monthly. I want students to know the words. And that's about as far as it goes. I'll borrow a phrase from the superintendent in a discussion about it. Repetition doesn't teach patriotism, it teaches the words. And that's, that's part of what we do, unfortunately, with some of our students. That may be as far as we get, but we always try. We currently try, we have tried, and we will try to go a lot further than that. But I at least want students in the Anchorage School District to know the words of the pledge and the anthem and the Alaska flag song. We have a policy on promoting patriotism and love of country, and it's fair for us as a board to give some guidance to administrators to say, when you're at least fulfilling the minimums. This is a minimum. It doesn't prohibit anything beyond that. We have schools that play it every day. They still get to play it every day. They can do it more often if they decide that as a building level. And that was part of my opposition to weakly. I didn't want us to change the culture of a building, change the flavor of the day. But we do want this to be included. I don't think it will impact a whole lot of schools. A lot of our schools already play this song or these songs once a month. Those schools won't have any change in what happens. So we will impact a few schools, and I think fairly lightly. If we do have schools where students aren't hearing these songs at least once a month, we probably want to ask them to at least do that much. I've had a lot of feedback on this personally. I've talked to a lot of people about it. Most of the feedback has been against it. But I also know there are a lot of people in our community that want this. They want to know that their kids hear it. They want to know that we teach our history, that we teach why we do well. And I think the vast majority of people also want us to cover the dark spots in our history as well, the complete history, if you will. And I think our teachers do a good job of that. It's not something we stand up at every assembly and talk about. This is a ceremonial song that I think highlights the best of us. And no, it doesn't cover everything when we play it. But I'm in favor of it as it's written today. I'm in favor of teaching the words. We should teach the complete story behind all of it, but that is something that is not what any of this is about. Thank you.
Ms. Bellamy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So to my knowledge and to my research, there's no state or federal law that mandates the playing or the singing of the National Anthem. And I do not believe that the Anchorage School District should start mandating that the National Anthem be played. I feel I will be voting against this. I feel that our current policy is sufficient, and I do not believe that our students and staff should be mandated to rotelessly listen to any song, but be actively and academically engaged in curricular and other activities to help them learn our country's history. Learn about our celebrations, learn about our songs. Activities that also teach respect, encourage the sharing of ideas, encourage responsible citizenship, inclusion, and acceptance of differences. That is where our strength as a country lie. Those are the values that our democracy demand of each of us. I believe that we should give students opportunities to honor and respect the freedoms, the values, the traditions that we as Americans, sometimes we do take for granted, as Americans and Alaskans. I do believe that routinely playing the National Anthem would present an opportunity. But it is not the only opportunity, the only activity or opportunity that our kids, that would do that. So I will not support the policy. Not because I'm unpatriotic or anti-American, but because I feel that our policy right now is adequate, just as it's written. I also believe that the policy change sets unnecessary requirements for students and staff. I am concerned that the policy's intent may not justify the potential impact to students who might struggle to understand the historical context and meaning. Tonight, we have had a wonderful testimony. We have heard interpretations of what that third stanza means. But we've had several interpretations. But we took time to listen, not to just sit and listen to words that we do not understand. If the intent of the revised policy is to build unity or patriotism in our schools, I believe that there are much better ways to do this without mandating that students and staff listen without any context or understanding. If the intent is to make sure that students and adults know both songs so that they can proudly sing them at assemblies and other school-sponsored events, then let's make sure the curriculum and the opportunities to learn it is there. For some of us, listening to the National Anthem is a source of pride, and it should be. We are Americans. However, in a more diverse America and Alaska, others could have a different feeling toward the meaning of the words. We live in America, and as Americans, our students have the freedom or should have the freedom to choose how they feel about any situation. In my experience, we usually sing the first verse of the National Anthem. We did not discuss in our committee meeting whether we were singing one verse, two verses, or all four verses. Under the new policy, we need to decide what that's going to be. I'm guessing we're going to stop at the first verse because that's what we're used to. And it's reasonably quick, if this policy passes. If our goal is to build unity in our schools, then let's take time to clearly define what that is for in today's diverse America and diverse Alaska and diverse Anchorage. It is not just about listening to a song. It's about teaching respect for our state, our nation, for the people who live within them, understanding our history and understanding our shared responsibilities. I do not believe that this can be mandated or achieved through listening without context or guidance. And in the end, and most importantly, I trust our educators. And in the end, and most importantly, I trust our educators, I trust our leadership and curriculum, to give students the choice and option to learn about both songs and others. These are not the only two patriotic songs, when they are developmentally, academically, and emotionally ready to do so. Thank you.
So, for me, as someone taking APUS, AP US history, I'd like to think that I'm learning a lot of history. We spent a whole year on world history last year, now we're focusing in on the U.S. But I still realize that we're not going to learn it all. We have so much history in our nation, we're not going to learn it all. And I think that the best way to teach people patriotism and about our country is not through this method. I think that there are better ways so that it doesn't seem forced on our students. When you're forced to do something, you don't want to do it. It makes it a burden, a hassle. When I'm told that I have to take out the trash, I don't want to do that. As Mr. Donley said, today is Constitution Day. In my eighth grade class, for history, we studied U.S. history. And on Constitution Day, we learned to sing the preamble. I won't sing it because I can't carry a tune. And we sung it for our entire school. And I think that that's a cool way that, within our school and within our history class, we're learning truly the meaning of that and what it says for our nation. Everyone takes U.S. history at some point. We learn about the Revolutionary War. We learn about the National Anthem. And I think that through those history classes, where you can go more in-depth in what those words mean, it's such a better way to learn about what makes us Americans, where our country came from, and truly why we're patriotic. Overall, I think that voting for this or not voting for this isn't going to change a lot. I would advise the board not to vote for this, though, because it seems a little bit of an extra bit of work that we have to do, a little bit of a nudge, like, yeah, we have this power, we're forcing it on you. And I think that that's not very patriotic either. I think that we should have the choice to listen to it. At my school, the volleyball team sings the anthem before their game. At the football games, someone sings the National Anthem. Even at our cross-country races, my friend Ava sings the National Anthem. I just don't think that this is the best way for us to get the anthem out there, to get the meaning out there, to get our students to know what it is to be a patriot and to have love for our country.
Thank you. Any other board comments before we vote? Okay. Ms. Hilde.
Yeah, I agree with a lot of what I've heard the other board members share, but I just want to talk about how disheartened I am by the amount of time we've spent on this. We saw our peak scores today, and I don't get real worked up over peak scores, but they are information, you know, that says our students aren't where we want them to be, and certainly not across our district. For me, I am on this board because I want students to be really good at math. When you're really good at math, life is going to go a lot easier. It's, you know, I just know that from life experience, right? But whatever we're doing, we just have so much time. This has been going on since June of last year. We had a wonderful presentation right away from Director of Fine Arts and our director, the head of the History Department, and came in and shared all the great things we're doing, making sure everybody's complying with board policy, which is the correct thing to do. And that is our job, is to make sure board policy is enforced. It's not a gotcha process. It's not to say, oh, we caught you doing something, and we mess up our own board policy all the time. This should be an element of humility that we lead by example. But the amount of time, the amount of resources, the number one thing I hear from people when I go out into the community is the talk of spending on, you know, administrative time. Our board has to take responsibility for how much time we take from administration on, this is one small, tiny, you know, we heard five minutes it's going to take. I think that's a bit tone deaf from what we've heard testimony over the last year on what five minutes really is. But even if it is just that, the amount of time we have invested in this, when we could have been, right, the opportunity cost of focusing on our students. And if we don't exercise self-discipline in saying, is this advancing our mission? Is this in line with this year's strategic goals and our overall long-term strategic goals? We will not improve education in Anchorage. The responsibility lies with us. We have to have this self-control and self-discipline to do it. So there's not a chance I could vote for something like this. It does not advance student learning. We're not going to help kids get jobs or go to college. This is one little thing. But the greatest opposition is the amount of time and energy we have invested and not been focusing on children.
Mr. Donley.
Thank you, Madam President. I do believe this is focused on our kids and our students. There is a clear perception by very many people in the United States that our public schools have lost their way. They have not, the people have a perception, many people have a perception, that our schools no longer teach patriotism. They no longer have the same value set that made this country great. And along with teaching all the bad things that have happened over the course of the history of the United States, we ought to emphasize some good things also, such as basic culture. And I think that's good for our kids. I think that's good for our country. It's good for our communities. You know, I got into this last year when I got phone calls from parents complaining that the Pledge of Allegiance wasn't being said at their schools. And guess what? They were right. It was a board policy, said the pledge was supposed to be said every day, but not all our schools were following the policy. And it took a little investigation to find out that, and thankfully, that has now been corrected. We also had the National Anthem as a component of our music curriculum. And many of the arguments against the necessity or the need to do the National Anthem was it was taught in music class. Turns out, that wasn't true either. Turns out, there were, a small but significant group of music teachers weren't following the curriculum and weren't teaching the National Anthem. And I think that's an essential component to being an American. So now that's been corrected also. So I don't think that that was a waste of time in any way, shape, or form. We discovered more than one circumstance where board policy was not being followed and led to an impression, would contribute to the impression by many members in the public, that the schools aren't appropriately addressing civics and patriotism. So I do not think this has been a waste of time. I think this has been a very helpful exercise. I've learned a lot. I learned a lot about what our policies are. And if there, if board members, it's been suggested that there are other things we could do to instill patriotism, and I would welcome any other member of the board to bring those ideas forth. I mean, as you pointed out, we've been discussing this since last summer, and yet there haven't been any specific proposals that I know of, but I'd be happy to work with any member that has those, because I do think, I'm very open to other ideas about ways to instill patriotism, especially in an educational, open way. So, I appreciate the comments, but I really do think this was a very worthwhile exercise.
Mr. Holloman, and then Ms. Mitchell.
I'd strongly encourage the board not to think of specific ways and bring them forward. Policy is supposed to be general, and to some degree, minimums. I'm bothered because it was suggested if we don't do this, we won't have patriotism in the school. And I think a lot of people found that very offensive from the get-go, because there's a lot. There's a lot in the curriculum. There's a lot that's covered. There's a lot of ceremony. We're establishing a minimum, and I think that's appropriate. But going further and starting to come up with ideas about what each of our schools can do, I would say is possibly the worst thing we can do, unless we truly think they've gone off the rails. I don't think they have. I think people are learning an awful lot. I think this is a very small compliment to that. I think it will make a little bit of change in a few schools for material that should be there. Our National Anthem should be part of our schools, but it shouldn't be 98% of it. It should be that small part, and the true knowledge of our history and what people have done should be all the other. So I think if this passes or if this fails, I hope we move on, unless we see a substantive gap that needs to be fixed. I hope we will attend to our business and let our folks that know the kids by name figure out what those individuals need in order to be fully educated and appreciative of what we have in this country.
Ms. Mitchell.
So I think it is appropriate that we had the State Social Studies Teacher of the Year here this evening. I am very impressed by what we do in our schools, from elementary school on up. I have been at multiple, I think our kids do know the National Anthem. It gets played all the time. I don't think there's any issue with teaching patriotism in the schools. And so, Mr. Donley, I hope when you talk to the public and they raise that issue, you dispel that myth and explain to them what our schools are doing to teach. I mean, when I hear the students who testified, Emily's very well-thought-out thoughts on this, our kids have critical thinking skills, which is so much of what we want. The people who opposed being ruled by the King of England had critical thinking skills. That is what led them to come up with the Bill of Rights, to come up with our Constitution, to come up with the Declaration of Independence. And that's what, I have absolutely such high regard for what we do in our district and how eloquent our students are, and I just don't see this as an issue.
Was someone else wanting? Ms. Ficalis.
This has been going on for a couple of months now, and I've had a lot of time to reflect on it and think about it, and to listen to board member comments and to listen to community comments. And I've gone back and forth on this issue, you know, in a lot of ways. And I was not able to support the first one because I did feel like it was too much. And so I got to take a look at what's in front of me. If I remember correctly, the original purpose of your addressing this was because the policy, you know, clearly stated on a regular basis as determined by the school board, and that was not defined. So, to the board, if this fails, we're probably going to have to revisit this and define it in some way. And that's all this is trying to do. We already do all of this. Our National Anthem is sung at many games and many events and, you know, assemblies or other, you know, gatherings and ceremonies. It doesn't say you have to play it on a speaker system. It does say at events, and that does count as towards that once-a-month kind of thing. I'd go out to venture and say with all of the awesome sporting events we have going on right now, it's played multiple times a week, and that there's lots of different exposure in different ways. I think our middle schools and our high schools do have that exposure to the National Anthem in that way. Our littles, our elementary kids, it might be, you know, I think that's where, I think this becomes an opportunity for them to hear it. They aren't going to be able to comprehend it, you know, maybe until they get a little bit older, but certainly little kindergartners are not going to be able to comprehend everything that comes behind, you know, these songs. But getting them the opportunity for exposure, because they may not hear it, whether it was at their preschool, or, you know, at the park, or where they go out to dinner. They're not going to have some of these opportunities, and that is what we do as a board in a district, is provide opportunities for our children. We're not saying you have to agree with it. We're saying we're providing you the opportunity to hear it and be a part of the discussion. I would hope that after all of this, after all of this time, that the teachers in the schools, maybe the principals, maybe our instruction coordinators, they're hearing that there is a need that needs to somehow be better fulfilled, that, you know, we want to get certain and more specific parts of our history and our conversation out to our kids, and that even the older students that have spoken have said that. We don't want to just, you know, do this on a rote kind of a basis. We want to know what's coming behind it. And so I'm hoping that, you know, administration and our, you know, teachers and our leaders, you know, are also hearing that as part of this conversation. At this point, I hope that this board is ready to take up this vote and to get this done, knowing that one way, it goes one way, but if it goes a different way, we still have to revisit the basic element of it that says on a regular basis as determined by the school board, and that still is not defined, and this will come back again.
So I'm going to be the last to speak. I wanted to make sure that we had, everyone was heard. I've been on this board, this is my second term, and I'm going on my fourth year. And before that, I testified, I can't say how many times, on our achievement gap. And I still think about that achievement gap and where we are. And we're not, patriotism, to me, is something, I don't remember in school saying the Pledge of Allegiance or singing the National Anthem. I know I'm old, but it didn't have that much of an impact on me that I remember it. What I remember is when I'm on the parade field when I was in the military and marching, that was, I felt patriotic. When I go to sporting events and I hear the National Anthem, I feel pride and patriotism. But it is so important to me that we remember that we have students that we are failing. We have students that we are doing good things for, but we still have students that need our attention as a board to help them be successful in this district. We are talking about our strategic plan for the next year. Those are the things I want to talk about. I'm not saying that patriotism is not important. I just don't believe it's as important as providing the skills our students need to be successful, and that's where our conversations need to be. So I'll be voting no. And if we're ready, student vote, please.
No.
Board members, please vote. That motion fails with four nays and three yays.
I move to approve ASD Memorandum Number 029, pass provisions to board policy Number 4112.4, 42212.4, 4312.4, all personnel health examinations.
Second.
Is there any public testimony on Memorandum 029? Hearing no public testimony, is there any board discussion? Mr. Holloman.
This is an excellent dilution from our policies. I don't think it's been enforced in a long time, and it's a good thing to get rid of.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Donley.
I agree with Mr. Holloman. It removes an unnecessary mandate, I believe.
Student vote, please.
Yes.
Board members, please vote.
I move to approve ASD Memorandum Number 021, and authorize the superintendent to award a contract for the restoration of the Goldenview Middle School roof to Weatherproofing Technologies Tremco through the King County Directors Association's Purchasing Cooperative, KCDA, a member of the Association of Educational Purchasing Agencies. If approved, the roof restoration will take place in the fall of 2019 through the summer of 2020.
Second.
Is there any public testimony on Memorandum 021? Hearing no public testimony, is there any board discussion? No board discussion, I'll ask for the student vote, please.
Yes.
Board members, please vote. That passes unanimously with seven yays.
I move to approve ASD Memorandum Number 031, the attached 2019-2020 Anchorage School District Organization chart.
Is there any public testimony on Memorandum 031? No public testimony, is there any board discussion? Mr. Holloman.
This would be a question to the administration through the chair, and it's something I'm just not familiar with. Assuming we approve this, and I think we will, would we assume that you would come back to us before making any changes to it? Or does this reflect changes that have been made and we're approving them after the fact?
I would never assume anything, actually. And this came about, in the original ASD policy, this didn't reside in it. And when we adopted AASB policy as our district's policy, this was And when we adopted AA SB policy as our district's policy, this was something in there that when the board reviewed in the Governance Committee, it came up and it thought it was pretty easy. So this is the very first time in history that the board has, in my recent history and knowledge, that the board has approved an organizational chart. Interestingly enough, the board approves all hires of anyone, and my contract states that I develop a team, so it's a little bit contrary to the contract, but it really, it's all the same to me. I don't really have the answer to your question because this is the first time, but it gives an opportunity for us all to see the organization and certainly in discussions with the board if there was ever something that wasn't carried out or a weak spot, that could be a recommendation, you know, from the board to focus on something. I mean, the feedback is welcomed. I just don't really have an answer to when that would, there's no precedent set, I guess.
Ms. Hildy.
The policy just states that an annual approval by the board, but if there's a concern over complying with contract, that's a very important issue. So I'd like to ask that the Governance Committee review that during the superintendent process for this next year to make sure we are complying with Dr. Bishop's contract.
Okay.
Which is to say she can change it however she wants.
Any other board discussion? All right, student vote, please.
Yes.
And that Memorandum 031 passes with seven yays. All right, next item on the agenda is non-action items. There's only one item there. Is that one anyone wants to pull for discussion? Okay, moving on, we are looking at new business. Does anyone have any topics for new business?
Ms. Mitchell.
Dr. Bishop, this may be on the agenda for a future meeting already, but I would love to hear about what's going on with the Educator Rising Program and also how the change at UAA might impact that whole process.
Is there another board member that would like to hear that?
I would.
Okay, so we have a second. Based on that, that will actually go on our, what's it called? The RFI log, and we will prioritize it as a board because that's where we've said we will put all things now. Yes, Ms. Hildy.
Wasn't there another question that came up during the meeting that I thought that should go on the log? Just to make sure we're getting the practice, because Dr. Bishop said she would provide information, but I want to make sure that goes on the log.
Yep.
Let me see. The middle school, was it the middle school? But just as our practice to keep reminding ourselves, all questions are great, but we need to make sure the board is providing direction, not individuals.
And obviously, there's no hurry on that. I just, you know.
And that is, the whole kind of purpose is to prioritize, and once we have items on there, we'll bring it forth to the board to, based on administration's input as to timeline, prioritize those things. Any other new business? If not, I have several. Okay, well, the first one is our Board Leadership Forum. We've had no RSVPs on that. We do have a little flyer that's been made up if individuals would like this. I think we have to, at some point, say if we have no one signed up, that we're going to have to. Yes, Ms. Mitchell.
So two individuals have reached out to me asking me about this, and I don't know if that day works for them. I just sent them the link to, there's something on the board part of the website, but it's not, it's not very detailed. So I'm glad that we have a flyer, and I will certainly promote it.
Okay.
So I can, I can reach out to those people and see if the date works for them.
Okay, and we'll have these, Katie will have these if anybody else would like those. She also has additional community flyers if anybody needs more of those. You can get those from her at the end of the meeting. Yes, Ms. Hildy.
And I just want to add, if you aren't able, somebody in the public's interested in that and they can't come, I remember when I was running, I was very nervous to talk to board members, but I think it goes without saying, we would all be willing to have conversations with anybody interested, and I hope the public will always reach out to any one of us. You know, I'm sure somebody would get coffee if you're just even kind of wondering if that's a thing you're interested in, so.
Thank you, Ms. Hildy. The other thing that I wanted to bring up is resolutions. Oh, the ones that come up every month that we had talked about before in whether we're going to, if it's a resolution that's an action, takes action, or if it's just a resolution that supports something. I know there has been some discussion on whether, how we want to move forward with those resolutions. I think this is something, if other board members, if another board member agrees, that we should put on our RFI log, sorry. Right, or possibly move them to Superintendent Update, but I don't know if we want more discussion on that. I'm just bringing it up as a new business. Any thoughts? Ms. Hildy.
Yeah, we had mentioned it before, somebody mentioned, I can't remember, because some people get missed, right? I think we weren't doing Black History Month for a long time, or, you know, who's getting recognized and who's not, and the reality is that the celebration happens whether we make a resolution or not. So being sensitive to that and our, but I don't know what other board members think or that we flushed it out. I think that we should have an opportunity to talk about it and just see whether it's something we want to do or just have it in the Superintendent Update, what our schools are actually doing if we're having, I don't know, School Bus Driver Safety Awareness Week, you know, see what, how our district is celebrating it. So there, but that could just be a discussion, I think, would be beneficial.
Ms. Fekalas? Oh, okay. Okay. So we will put that on our school board work session and just have a quick discussion on that. The other thing that I wanted to talk about or bring up as new business is tickets to events. We are overwhelmed with invitations to fundraisers and events, and usually there's a cost associated with those. I know that many of us have paid for our own tickets. Sometimes the district has a table or we're invited to go, but I think we need to talk about how we're going to address that in the future, whether it's something the district pays for and we reimburse, or if it's related to school board business and you wouldn't go unless you're a school board member, do we incur the cost? But that's a conversation that we need to have so that we can put something in place and be consistent. How to, is that something board members would like to discuss at our next work session?
I was hoping for it to be part of a bigger discussion of what do we spend, what is our school district line or board line item, you know, what are we spending money on? What costs are we incurring? Because I just don't have a good feel for that. Are people getting these tickets? I don't know, you know, so just that we're all aware of what, what our part of the budget is doing. I thought we were going to talk about it at our board retreat this summer, and I think we just ran out of time.
We did run out of time. It's certainly something that we could talk about during a board meeting and put it on the agenda if you'd like to do that next time, and then we can have a thorough discussion of what that might look like and what we want to do. We might even reference it back to, for policy, but I think we need to have the discussion and set a consistent guideline. And I think that is it for tonight unless someone else has any other new business. Ms. Mitchell.
Are we going to get to the comment section?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're not there yet. First, we have to ask if there's any other public testimony, if anyone else would like to testify this evening. Okay, hearing none, we will move on to school board and administration comments. Yes, Ms. Mitchell.
Well, a couple of comments. I was approached by somebody who works at the Alaska Literacy Project about whether the school board might want to have a tape, a team, because in the past, when Tam Agostic Giesler was on the board, they always had a team. And I said, sure, I can pull together a team, and the next two board members I saw were Starr and Margot. So the three of us are going to be the board bees this Friday evening at 6:00 at the Denina Center, and we do have a table for 10. If anybody would like to come and sit at that table, other board members to cheer us on. You can't help us with the spelling, though. There are some very serious fines involved with that. And I have to say that I'm not sure the three of us are the best spellers on the board. I didn't vet this really in any particular way, so can't promise how far we'll make it, but I, I think it'll be a lot of fun and it will raise money for a good cause. And then I also wanted to commend the board and the superintendent for a really great discussion this week on kicking off our strategic planning process and including some of the key constituencies in the Greater Anchorage Bowl and having them help us figure, you know, be on the steering committee and also figure out how to reach out to different parts of the community, engage the community as much as possible in the process. So hopefully, if anybody listening to this has, says I'd like this particular group to be involved, they can shoot us a note as well. So thank you very much for that.
I do have one other one. I was approached by a community member who had her students, and I won't say names, but had her students in a private school and ended up moving them to our public schools, and she is absolutely thrilled with the education that they are getting, and those are the kind of things I like to hear. So very happy, meeting the needs of her students where possibly the other school wasn't able to do that, and just reiterates that we do have great public schools. So if there's no other comments, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. Okay, so adjourned.